I'd like to call the special meeting of the Westmont Board of Trustees for a budget workshop for fiscal year 2019-20 on called order at Thursday, May 2nd, 2019, at 4:30 PM. And ask Clerk Sinisky for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Berry's absent tonight. Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee, that's it?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Skip's here. I can leave if you want.
Oh, you can't.
All right. Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody. Mary, evening, and a couple of our other guests. Tonight's just a budget workshop, and before we start, I'm going to ask if there's anything else that's not in the budget for an open forum. Now's the time. If it's a question in the budget, we'll get to that later. None seeing the, in regards to the budget, we would like to do after each section, open it up. Is that right? Open it up for questions. And so at least get through a section, and then we'll move on to any questions and comments. And seeing that, I'm going to immediately turn it over to Spencer for our budget.
All right. Thank you. So before we get started into it, I just want to take a brief moment to thank everybody for this, for all the work that has been done on this, and for all the work that you as a board are about to do as we go through this, and the work that you've done leading up to this as well. So that everyone's aware, this is a very long and in-depth process that goes on for several months and involves a lot of work from a lot of people. And it all kind of culminates here, which is what then gives us the plan as we go forward through the rest of the year. So the departments have done a huge amount of work in preparing a budget. As we get into this budget, you'll see there were, all the requests make good logical sense. There's good reasons for the requests. They're all justified. They're all important things that need to happen. Departments have done a very good job, as you'll also see as we go into this, of saving money anyway that there is an opportunity to do that. And so a huge thank you to the departments and their, all their staff in working on that. Also wanted to thank Steve May for getting the budget to the state that it is. As you'll see, as we get into this, it is, we're at a balanced budget where we can go forward with this budget. We can also make some tweaks as the board would like to, but as we get into it, we're at the point where we're at an OK spot right now, and that's all due to Manager May. I'd also want to do a huge thank you to my staff in the Finance Department, especially Ruth Olson, who you see back there, who's kind of the one that makes all these numbers fit together and work, and kind of the brains behind getting it all settled and set. So without further ado, I'm going to jump into the presentation. As you're all aware, the board members have sat through this presentation for several years, so the overview and kind of review of the way budgets work will be a little bit faster this year than it's been in prior years, just because we're more familiar with it. Let's go ahead and get started. So you also have in your packets the same presentation here, or if you're on your Chromebooks, you can find it from the Google folder that was sent in a link in the email. So in general, a brief overview of the way the budget works. The budget is our plan for the coming year, and it's really based on our philosophy and priorities, the resources that we have, and then the needs that we have, and they all kind of funnel together to create the budget. So as usual, we'll talk very briefly about the way that funds work in government accounting. So in government accounting, there's a series of funds that we have, and I think each of these different buckets, kind of how we typically think about funds, there are different buckets of accounts or buckets of money that can be used for specific purposes. There are specific ways they can interact with each other, but in general, the money within the bucket has to stay within that bucket. And I think that's an accurate number of our total buckets that we have, so we'll try to consolidate a little bit as we go through the budget to make it a little simpler, but you can see there's a lot of different funds involved. And within each fund, the budget includes information about revenues or money coming in, expenses or money going out, transfers between funds, and then based on how the revenues and expenses go, either there's a surplus in the budget, which then sends money into the fund balance to be able to be used for future years, or we take money out of the fund balance. It's kind of like the budget is what you would expect to do in your personal life, where you get your typical, your paycheck every couple of weeks, and then you spend your money, and you, in general, you'd want the money that you spend on an ongoing basis to match the money that you get in as an ongoing basis. You'll also be saving money, putting it into your savings account, and you would use that savings account for one-time purchases if you need to, for example, have a major appliance that needs to be replaced or something like that. That would make sense, where you would pull that out of your savings account, or what we will call in here our fund balance. That's kind of the use for the one-time expenses. There's also a scenario that you see here called carryovers, and those are where we set aside the money because we know in the next couple of years, we're going to be doing a project, so we say, let's start setting aside that money right now, kind of claim the money. And if we don't finish the project in a year, with most capital projects, you don't finish in a year. Some of the projects, you set aside the money for it, and you don't even get a chance to start on it that year because there's a lot of prep work before you can even start on it. And so then, going into the next year, we say, OK, well, let's carry over that money from one budget year to the next. And so one-time expenditures or carryovers are the reasons that we would use our accumulated fund balance, or the equivalent of our savings account. Ongoing operations we use for ongoing revenues. And that's our budget philosophy, the philosophy this board has had for several years, where we don't want to get to where our regular monthly day-to-day costs are coming out of our savings account, because then your savings account goes down. So this budget does adhere to that same philosophy that we've had in the past several years. With that, we do have several funds, you can see them listed there, that are deficit spending, and that we've saved money from prior years and are now going to be using it for larger projects this year. The next piece of that puzzle of putting together the budget was our priorities. So as you're aware, Board, we have a strategic plan that gives the village some direction, some guidance, and helps establish some priorities. So in that strategic plan, it's got a few different components of the vision. The first one is governance, and the kind of main themes that came from the strategic plan that you'll see reflected in this budget this year are themes of financial sufficiency, which included things like getting additional revenue sources, making sure we're receiving the money we need to receive, those sort of things. Efficiencies, especially efficiencies with the use of technologies, and then also making sure we have the facilities and equipment to allow our employees to do the jobs that they need to do. The other components of the vision included identity and image, which includes engagement and events, aesthetics, public safety. You'll note, we'll have a large portion of our budget expenditures going towards identity and image. In the strategic plan, it talks about how one of the pieces of Westmont's identity is that it's a safe place to live. And with that, our public safety, vast majority of our costs for fire, as well as police, are all part of that identity of Westmont as a safe place. So you'll see a large amount of our expenditures there. We also have a focus on the downtown, economic development, as well as infrastructure. You'll also see a large amount of our ongoing capital expenditures, our one-time expenditures are in infrastructure, because those are the large-ticket items, and infrastructure is what costs a lot of money. So the next piece of the puzzle is the resources. You've got our philosophies and the priorities of what you want to spend. The next piece is what money do you have available to spend it? That includes the accumulated savings, so savings we've have from prior years, ongoing revenues, and transfers. So in terms of savings, I want to talk a little bit about some of the savings. As you'll recall, earlier in this year, when we were talking about the Public Works facility, we were asked by a couple of trustees to make sure that we weren't just looking to do new things on the backs of increasing taxes or doing those things, that we are looking at savings. And as we explained at that point in time, the departments do a very good job throughout the course of the year, anytime they can, in saving money. And it's just, historically then, that's just what we do, and we don't, we hadn't really bothered to kind of come back to the Village Board and say, look at all these things that we've saved. So as we do these savings, what often will happen is that money that's saved is rerouted into other things. So as we go through the course of our budgeting, part of our process is we do a slight inflationary increase, but it's not as much as inflation. And so what departments have to do is they have to find ways to save other places, because costs are going up somewhere else. And so what we've done is quantified over the last couple of years, just a list of all those different kinds of things that we've saved. And this is not an exhaustive list. This was just sort of departments went back and said, what can we remember that we've saved? And so you'll see, this is just a small sampling, but I think it's a good realization. I think it was good for us as a staff to go back and think through, look at the things that we do save on a regular basis, and I think it's also good for the board and the public to be aware that that kind of thing is happening. So if you're looking at the presentation online, you can click on the link that says "Brief overview of some savings." If you're looking through the paper packet, you can simply turn the page. If you're in the folder that I shared originally, this is the item in the folder that is labeled A-02 sample saves. Let me pull that up right now. So we've got two tables on here. There's one at the top and then one at the bottom. The top one is based on savings starting in fiscal year 2017-18, so it would include fiscal year 17-18, 18-19, and then projected for the budget of 19-20. Those are kind of actual expenditures that have been saved or are saved in terms of part of this next year's budget process. Then underneath that, took the same information, but then extended that. So some of the savings that we've identified are savings that will occur each year, because it was something, you know, like a change in a position that will change things on an ongoing basis. In other scenarios, it was just a, we saved, there was a specific project, and we found a way to save money on that project. If it was a one-time expenditure, we just included that in the totals, and you'll see it's in both the 17-18 and then the one through the next five years. The only difference is the bottom section, the one through the next five years, also includes five years' worth of projecting those annual savings forward. So you can see there, each department is able to save some significant amounts, especially when you look through taking these savings and projecting them up through the next five years. So you've got, initially, largely through some contract savings on IT, about $148,000 projected in total savings over the next five years. A lot of that was dealing with reducing some costs for copiers, so there were some page counts that we would pay addition to on our prior contract. In our new contract, our IT director was able to work with the company and get those included in the initial lump sum, so saved significant amount of money there, as well as an item where proposals on a server build came back high, and they found a lower way to do it. We've got community development, who's got some personnel savings that projected forward, it's about $415,000. In finance, we had about $150,000 savings projected going forward. Large chunk of that, not that $150,000's a large amount anyway, but as you'll see in the budget, there was a reduction of a part-time staff in finance. You can see Fire has got about $915,000 in terms of projected through a five-year savings. A large amount of that is through alternate revenue sources, so it's basically saving the taxpayers' money, finding other ways to do what, things that need to happen, finding ways that don't impact the taxpayers. And you can see that's a lot in both Police and Fire. On the Fire side, there's a little bit of that in our Fire 2% fund that they receive, but the large portion of that comes from contributions that we've received from other Fire districts that the village works for, so that we're able to receive equipment and some training from some other Fire districts, because we provide services to them as well. And that includes, going forward, the Northwestmont Fire Protection District, which has become a special service area of the village, and so that's generated some additional revenue to cover some of these ongoing operational costs going forward. You can see there's some capital postponements, so things that don't need to be done, even if they're in the budget. Our departments do a good job of saying, well, if something doesn't need to be done, let's hold off and not do it, just because it's in the budget. That's one of the stereotypes that you'll hear about, you know, is that, oh, the government budgets, if they have it, they have to spend it. But our departments do a really good job of not following that stereotype and saying, can I save money? I'm going to save money even if it's budgeted, and you can see that illustrated here. Got adjustments to Kurt's contracts, some grants, other savings, and then a large portion of that is also in the volunteer efforts that our Fire Department coordinates through the EMA. You can see in our Police Department, again, a large source is an alternate revenue source. A lot of that comes through seizure monies, through our partnership with the DEA. That's a proposal that was initially discussed and started several years ago, that was something that was recommended by our Fiscal Ad hoc Committee, that we had a number of years ago, and no trustee in the world was on that committee, and that was something that was recommended at that time. The police has done that, and they're bringing in a sizable amount of revenue that helps offset costs. So things that Police Department couldn't do to provide additional services for the department and for the residents, which are served by that department, that couldn't be done without these other sources of revenue. Again, there's the capital postponement, vehicle replacement in terms of there's been a couple of years that we haven't had to put money aside for a vehicle, because we've been able to postpone actually purchasing the vehicle, as well as overtime savings. So the police were able to make some changes in the way they handle overtime to make some additional savings there. Then Public Works additionally has done some savings, and, you know, there were some instances that were identified where the capital amounts came in under budget, and again, it's that just because it's there in the budget doesn't mean it's going to be spent, because this money is treated as if it's important to save it, because we can use it for other things to serve the taxpayers. And so they've done a good job of that. When things came in under budget, we made sure to save that money to be able to use for other things. So there's another few hundred thousand dollars there. So altogether, you can see, projected through the next five years, about $3 million worth of savings from the departments, which I think is a great benefit to the community that's being able to use those funds repurposed to other purposes. So any questions on that section so far? All right. So I'm going to jump back to the PowerPoint presentation. Those with the paper packet can again just turn the page. Turn the page back probably. So other resources we have are the revenues. So the money that we have that comes in, and a couple of changes that are happening this year in the budget that we'll see a little bit later, but I wanted at least bring to your attention, are the Places for Eating Tax. So this is something the board's aware of. They've already passed the ordinance to increase the Places for Eating Tax, the purpose of which is to fund the debt repayment for the Public Works facility. And the other piece that was discussed at a committee meeting, I believe last month or in March, was to increase permit parking, so we can generate about $30,000 by increasing the cost of our permits at our train station. And that was something the board discussed, and that's been included in the budget. Is there a?
Quick question. How much is the permit?
So right now, they're $100 per quarter, and the proposal is to increase them to $125 per quarter. So that still keeps us fairly competitive with the communities around us, and that is something that kind of, once we get to the end of the process, we'll talk about, what are the next steps to implement that, assuming that that continues and stays in the budget as an increase of that $30,000.
Part of that also is to accommodate other vehicles, like mopeds, you know, still permanent but incentivized, the ones that take smaller space, use less fuel, and...
Right. At the same time, we should do both of those at the same time.
One more piece of that, too, was, the justification was that it hadn't been looked at or increased for years.
Yep. Spencer, can you?
Property taxes, 18% of our budget, but on a homeowner, it represents 7%, 8%?
I think last time we looked at it, it was pretty close to about 10%.
Oh, it's up.
I think it's about 10% of the property tax bill. Again, it would depend on the specific homeowner and which school district they're in, and what that school district charges for taxes, and what other districts they're in, but I think it was right around 10%.
Okay.
Maybe 9% or 10% of the property tax bill for the resident. But it does make up 18% of our revenues. You can see, one of our biggest sources of revenue is sales tax, and you can see the other pieces of revenue that make this up. So we're going to go through these main revenue sources. Some of them are kind of major revenue sources to bring your attention to because of their amounts, and others, just because of their local, their impact on specific funds or their impact on recent decisions the board has made. So you can see, our sales tax revenue has continued to go up the last several years. So it's a good thing. We are budgeting now a little bit less than what we had last year. As you may recall, several years ago, back when we had the kind of Great Recession, we found that, you know, we, our past practice was to say, here's how much we made last year, let's go up a little bit more in budget to make even more than we actually got this year. And then we ran into significant problems where our revenues came in significantly under, once we hit a year where the economy kind of went down. And so what we started doing at that point was, once the economy started improving, we said, let's budget each year to get close to, or a little bit less than, what we actually got the year before. If we end up getting more and the revenues continue to grow, that's great, because that turns into additional savings that we can use for capital projects the following year. And if the revenues don't end up growing again, then at least our revenues aren't underperforming, and when we get to next year's budget, we can keep it static or can reduce it a little bit. So with that, you'll see, we've accumulated some savings, and we're accumulating additional savings, but this year, we're conservatively budgeting about $9.4 million in our sales tax revenue. You can see our Places for Eating Tax revenue has been fairly consistent the last couple of years. There's a large increase right now, because as you are aware, we just passed the increase to go towards the debt for the Public Works facility. You can see the video gaming revenue tax, which has gone up, especially at the beginning, as we just had, you know, a couple of businesses here and there taking advantage of it, as more and more businesses did it. You can see it's gotten a little bit higher in increase. It's leveling, it's not growing quite as quickly as it was, but it's still increasing. So again, we're budgeting to be a little bit less than what we were this year going forward, but still an increase of $50,000 from the prior year's budget. Hotel motel taxes have kind of gone a little bit up and down, but they're, they've kind of been fairly steady this year. You can see our budget, we kept it $730,000, the same as it was the prior year. Our water sales revenue has gone up a little bit, and we continue to expect that to increase a little bit. As the board's aware, our water revenues increased for two different reasons. One is for the increase that we receive from the DuPage Water Commission, which is based on their costs, their infrastructure needs, as well as any cost increases from the city of Chicago. The other piece is for the village's own infrastructure needs. As you'll recall, our Public Works Department did an analysis a couple of years ago, indicating we should be increasing the water rates about 40 cents each year for the next several years. This budget also includes that, and so again, like the parking permits, assuming this budget is approved, then the next step is to figure out, when does the board take action to make that rate go into effect? Utility taxes are interesting, in that you can see, that's one of our revenue sources that is not increasing. The last couple of years, it's been down a little bit. So in some senses, that's, you know, good, as people are using less electricity, it's good for the environment, and there, we receive taxes based on the amount of electricity used, so that's not necessarily a bad thing for some of that revenue to go down. At the same time, a lot of it's seasonal, and it just kind of depends on how the year is in terms of how much natural gas people use. The telecom bills have been going down significantly over the last couple of years, as people have done more and more on cell phones and on data plans, as opposed to on telephone communication in the minutes.
And that same thought does apply to the water revenues, too, because usage is variable, and, you know, whether it's us encouraging conservation or just, you know, a hot year, it affects that as well.
Yes.
The village doesn't get any taxes from cell phones?
So we do, but I believe we get a much higher percentage of the part of your bill that goes towards talking on the phone, not the data. So your minutes, which most phone companies are now, the minutes portion of the phone is a very small piece compared to the data portion of a smartphone plan. And so you get...
I didn't even know you could talk on these things.
Right. So as more and more people are doing less and less talking, and the phone companies don't charge as much for the minutes, the village gets less revenue from that.
But that wouldn't show up as a utility tax?
So it does. That's a portion of the telecom tax, so the green section that's at the top. So you can see, from 2017 to 18, the green section has shrunk significantly, and it's still down in 19.
People are talking less.
Right. People are talking less, and phone companies are saying, people, you know, I can give people unlimited minutes for a little bit, because that takes up such a small piece of our spectrum. What really costs the cellphone companies the money is the data, and so that's what, and that's what people will pay for. People like to have data, and so they'll pay a lot for the data, so less cost on the minutes, more cost on the data. And so I think that, at least that's kind of the explanation we got from the state when we were kind of trying to understand why our, why everyone's telecom taxes were going down a couple of years ago.
That's interesting.
Yeah. So it's just the way technology is going.
I'll interrupt you.
Yeah. So the next item, the next graph just shows our property tax extended revenues, so you can kind of see that increase. As you can kind of tell, the last couple of years, most of our revenue sources have stayed fairly static or have gone down slightly. The pension cost is the one that goes up a little bit, and that is because that's the way the pension cost is designed to work. So when the actuary calculates and figures out how much you need to pay, they say, well, let's assume certain percentages increase in terms of payroll costs, and you have to pay a certain percentage of your payroll, and so, because they expect it's going to go up each year, they plan on a 4% or 5% increase in the pension cost each year, and that's how they calculate it. So it's not unexpected for pension costs to go up. That's the way they work. If they didn't, we'd have had to pay a really large amount earlier. So that's kind of how it is. They expect as revenues go up, as inflation goes up, that's when you can start paying more money. So that's why that goes up each year. And then you can see the construction fees, and the last couple of years, we've had some really high construction fees, and that's really based on which projects come in and happen. And so what we try to do when we budget is we try to say, if there's one or two really big projects, let's not count on that revenue. Again, if we get it, that's great, and then it goes into accumulated savings, and we can use it for one-time projects the following year, but let's not count on getting huge permit fees for major projects every single year. So any questions on revenues? All right.
Where have we, yeah. In this whole thing here, where have we put the revenue that we're hoping to kind of change around a little bit, using the administrative function with some of these local ordinances that weren't getting here before we're going to the county?
Adjudication.
Yeah. So we do have that in general revenues. I didn't have a chart for it. It's a small portion, but I can pull up and see, I can make sure by the end of the meeting, I can pull up what we have with it, or I can ask Ruth to find the amount and let us know before the end of the meeting.
But it's there, and...
Yeah, it's there.
Right now, it's not a major factor.
No. The major point, and I think the big success of adjudication, has largely been getting compliance.
Right.
So because we have the fees, and we can charge a larger fee, and can kind of say, here's the fee you're going to have to pay if you don't get in compliance, and because we can have them come in, come into the court, I think we've had a better success rate at getting people to comply. But part of that is also, when they do comply, we don't charge them as much as we potentially could. So it's, I think it's been a bigger success in terms of getting more compliance than revenue, which is why we adopted it in the first place, was we wanted to help get these people to get in compliance with our code enforcement and get some things that need to be cleaned up, cleaned up. The revenue's a nice side benefit. It's good that we've gotten a little bit out of it, but it's, you know, a very small percentage of our overall budget.
Right.
But Ruth will find out what that amount is.
That's all right.
So any other questions about revenues? Money coming in. All right. So let me talk a little bit about the transfers. So as I mentioned, there's kind of some specific ways different funds can interact with each other. One of those ways is through transfers, and there has to be specific reasons to transfer it. So you can see here, we have our debt fund, which takes care of all the debt for the village, and so, as you might imagine, the money to pay for the debt has to come from somewhere, so it comes from lots of these different funds. So you can see the different places that put these in. You can see the red text is from our 2013 bond that did the resurfacing of large portions of the town. The green section is for our 2019 bond for the Works Facility, and the blue section is for the 2017 bond that was just for stormwater. So as you'll note in there, those are the main ways that the general fund is putting money in towards the bonds, is through Places for Eating Tax, and then a personnel change. So as you recall, we talked about, when we did the Public Works Facility, we talked about saying, we've historically had vacancies, so if somebody leaves, it takes a little bit of time to replace them. And historically, what we've done is we've just budgeted for everybody to be employed the whole year, and when somebody left, we said, oh, OK, that extra money that we saved, again, will go into future capital projects. What we said this year is, now the money that that saves is going to go towards covering our bond for a Public Works facility. So instead of budgeting that everybody's going to be here for the full year, the budget for personnel assumes everybody's going to be here for 99% of the year. for personnel assumes everybody's going to be here for 99% of the year. And so obviously, lots of people will be here 100% of the year, some people will be here for a little bit less, and so overall, it should average about 99%. And that's the personnel part. And then you, as you'll recall from capital, we had some reductions in capital and some reductions in equipment that are coming forward to fund the debt. The water fund, as you can see, pays out some transfers to some other funds for what it is doing, including the bond purchases, payment in lieu of taxes. The general fund puts money towards the vehicle replacement fund each year, as well as capital and stormwater funds for the kind of things that it has historically done. So when we created the stormwater fund, what we wanted to do is make sure that the money we had been putting towards stormwater out of the general fund didn't get replaced by the stormwater fund sales tax, instead it was in addition to. And so that's what we did is increase that general maintenance. The TIF fund, as you can see, are largely supported by themselves eventually is kind of the ideal and the goal, but right now, they are also largely supported by our excess reserve fund. So they are coming from that excess reserve out to the TIF fund. So you can see, we've got about $4.7 million planning to transfer from our excess reserves or prior accumulated savings into our CBD TIF fund and about $800,000 into our Southwest Ma Business District TIF fund.
Explain, I mean, again, the difference between reserve and excess reserve?
Sure. So as we talked about back on, a little bit back on this slide here, let me go grab it, there is really three or four different, about three main sections of this fund balance. So if this bucket is all the excess cash we have, there's a few different pieces. So first of all, we have what's called our reserve. And that is, the village sets up an amount that we want to keep as a contingency. So like, somebody might have an emergency savings account where this is, they're only going to use it in case of a dire emergency, you've got it safe. And so we have that as our reserve. And then on top of that, we'll have our carryover amounts, and then we have what's called excess. So that's extra savings that's above and beyond what we need to maintain our minimum balance and to make sure that we feel safe and secure. And as we get into this, we'll talk a little bit more about our general fund, where we went a little above and beyond kind of our very bare minimum to have even additional coverage. After that additional coverage, we have our minimum of what we need to stay safe, then we have a little bit of cushion just in case anything else happens. And then above that, we have some excess money that we are then using to fund one-time projects and capital as well as our TIF fund. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Cover it. All right, so the next piece of the budgeting formula is the needs of the village. So some of these are needs that are driven by the way accounting works and different accounting determinations and judgments. So you'll see in the budget as we go through, there's a couple of things where historically we've been counting for revenues kind of on a net basis where we have a company collecting money for us for some of our fire recovery fees or ambulance fees, and we've always just said, oh, we're just going to count the net we get as the revenue. In reality, what we should be doing is counting the gross of what they collect as the revenue, and then we have an expense to pay them to do the collection. So you'll see some of those things changing with offsets to revenue. Also with the, as I mentioned, with the North Fire Protection District, there is, as they've gone away from providing expenses, we're now getting them in terms of revenue, and so there's the offsetting expense of the equipment and training that they've historically provided. Additionally, we've got equipment replacements and upgrades that are needed, and then some personnel adjustments as needed. So those are kind of the operational needs. So as you go through this budget, you'll see a lot of things reflect either our priorities or our operational needs, or often a combination of both. So the budget process, as we've talked about, departments start working on this usually October, November, December time period. They put together what's called a base budget, and then from that base budget, that's basically, as I mentioned, a slight inflationary increase. I think this year it was half a percent, and they figure out how to make all their current operations work within that. Then there's a separate section called the considerations, where they put together the amount of what new things they want to do or changes to what they currently do, either increases or decreases. And then during the course of the budget preparation, we also had several committees. So as you're aware, the village board has committees for different departments, and as things came up that were going to be discussed in the budget, we addressed those at committees so the board had some input and could provide some direction initially. As you'll recall, several years ago, we used to have a series of three or four budget workshops, two or three hours each workshop. And what we found was that at that point, it was one of those, we would get some input from the board at one workshop, and then we'd have to rush and see how much information we could gather really quick before the next workshop later that week or the next week. And that's never quite as efficient as getting input from the board months earlier as we start saying, here's something we're thinking about, what do you think, board? Get the questions, get the answers, be able to make some determinations. And so that's why we started using the committees to funnel some of these budget requests. So as we go through this budget, you'll see lots of the things that are mentioned are things you've heard about at the Public Works Committee, heard about it, Public Safety Committees, heard about it, finance and administration committees. We've already talked about a couple of those, the parking permit fees, those kind of things. So those are not, won't be unfamiliar to you. And then after the results of the committees and the considerations, then the manager puts together a draft budget, where, which is, he's put in his prioritization and based on the available resources determine, here's what his recommended budget is to the board. And then it comes to the board for this discussion here, where we'll take any additional input, make any changes the board directs, and then the board will have final approval of the budget up for the next board meeting on May 9th. Any questions about the process or transfers that we've covered so far? All right, so as we get into this budget document, we're going to go through an overview of the budget. I do want to mention that we have a new system this year, so things will look a little bit different. A lot of the presentation is similar to what you've seen before, but we are working with a new system. So as you'll recall, in the past, we had some of the different programs broken out and lots of the departments and lots of the different vision components. This year, we kind of, in our new system, started in each department in a single vision component, and there's been a little bit of breakout into multiple vision components within that, but it's not quite as broken out as you would have seen in the past years where we had a couple of years on the old system of expanding and breaking out into different vision components. So that's a little bit different. One of the other changes that you'll note in this one, and this took me a little while to get used to, but in this system, budgeting negatives are good. So expenses are positive amounts, you know, like we spent $100. Revenues are negative amounts, where if you reduce your expense, it's a negative. So if you were spending $100 and now you're, you cut it by 10, that's a negative 10, and that negative 10 is a good thing. Or if you're spending $100 and you're getting, you know, $50 of revenue to help offset that, that $50 of revenue you're getting is the same as if you were cutting your expense, and so they call that a negative 50. So when we start off with our cash balances, our fund balances, those are also negative numbers. So when we get to the budget document and you see our starting balance is like negative 3 million, that's $3 million to the good that we have, not $3 million to the bad. So there's one slide that's a little bit weird with that, but in general, negative numbers are good. So that's kind of unique and different. So we'll go through, we'll do an overview of the budget as a whole, and then we will kind of do that big picture of the financials. Then we're going to go look at what's not included in the budget. So as you're aware, everybody comes up with suggestions and ideas and presents them, as I mentioned, to the manager, and he has to apply his prioritization. And so with that, in order to get a balanced budget, not everybody can get everything that was requested. Some things have to be postponed or not done. And so we'll start with showing you what pieces are not in this budget. And then as we go through the budget, if there are things that you see in the budget that you think, wow, actually what was not in the budget might be a higher priority than what's in the budget, we can talk about that and we can look at swapping some things either way, but we wanted to give you a good indication of what's not in the budget first. And then we'll talk about what is in the budget. So we'll jump to the budget document. Before we do, I just want to give you an answer to your question. So code adjudication revenues, from Ruth's been able to determine, they represent about between $5,000 to $6,000 a year. So I think this year, we're budgeting about $5,000 for them.
Thank you.
So to get to the budget document, if you're in the PowerPoint, you can click on the link to the budget document. If you're in the folder, it's the document labeled B-02 Strategic Plan. If you're on the paper packet, just turn the page. So in the paper packet, we're now at about page 16. So in this document, I'm going to, a couple of these columns, just so we can get the big picture first. All right, so starting in our general fund, you can see we start with an estimated beginning available balance of negative 5.6 million. That means $5.6 million. That's a good thing that we have money at the beginning. This 5.6 million is the reserves that I was talking about earlier. That is where we say, we want to make sure we have 20% of our operating costs set aside as extra money in case something catastrophic happens. So in the general fund, we start with our balance of 5.6 million. We have about 26, almost $27 million worth of revenue, as well as some transfers coming in. You'll see we've got operating transfers, which are money that we can use for ongoing things. And then we have our other transfers, which are money that we use for one-time things, so grand total of about $28 million of money coming in. Down at the bottom, you can see we have about $28 million worth of money going out, a net change of negative 19,000. That means the negative or the good was bigger than the bad. So we are getting, we're increasing our fund balance by 19,000, and that's what the negative amount means. So we'll be ending with 5.631 million dollars. The bottom, the second bottom line there is the recommended minimum balance, something we talked about to, last year, I believe, is when we started this piece of saying, how much extra should we keep aside in there? So in the general fund, we said, just keep the 20%. That's our minimum to keep us safe. So we'll have an extra $19,000 beyond that amount in the general fund. Then we have, the next column over, is the excess general fund balance. So the reserves that we've already talked about is the 5.6 million. That's what we need to have to keep us safe, the 20%. Above and beyond that, 20%, we had an extra, we came into the year with an extra $10 million, and we expect to get roughly $2 million more. Most of that is coming from the potential sale of a property. So as, as I mentioned, there's some pieces that are being spent on projects in the TIF. That money will be spent in the TIF if and only if we are able to sell the property in the TIF, and we get that extra $2 million to cover the $4 million to send to the TIF. So you can see, in this case, we're transferring out about 7.7 million, a large chunk. So as mentioned, most of that's to the TIF, some of that is back to the general fund to cover some of those carryovers and one-time expenditures. And we expect to end with $4.6 million sitting in our excess general fund balance. We suggest a minimum balance of 3.6 million. So this is, we're saying it would be great to keep 3.6 million above the 20% that we have as our basic reserve, and that 3.6 million was to cover, $2.5 million, as you'll recall, was set up for, based on the state. So over the last couple of years, we've had times where the state's intentions towards municipalities were a little bit touch and go, and there was some worry about them cutting some of the funds or making some changes with that. And so we've got that set aside, an extra $2.5 million that we can use to help us if there's any major changes as a result of the state. We have another $500,000 set aside for some business contingencies. We have about two, so as you'll recall, sales tax is a large portion of our business. We have another $500,000 set aside in case any of those major players, anything happens with any of that. We've got some set aside. When we got some major increases in sales tax a few years ago, we decided to set aside some of that money in case anything changes. We also have, some of that money, about $500,000 of it, is for insurance. The, some of that's held at insurance companies, some of that, we're holding the cash, but we're still pledging it for insurance. We've got about $10,000 set aside for trees that people have paid us in lieu of trees. If they had to take down a tree, then there's a fee associated with it. And then about $50,000 of it is, as I mentioned, that foreign fire tax. So that $3.6 million is what we need, is what we're saying we should keep ideally to be even more safe. And then above that, we have another $1 million because as you may imagine during the course of the year, different things come up, often different developments will come up, and there's occasionally a need to use that $1 million. If we need to, we can, but we're not planning to use it, so it's yet another cushion on top of the cushion on top of the cushion. So we should be safe even with spending the funds. You can see with our capital projects funds, it includes several different funds, convention tourism, capital, bond facility, and looking down along the bottom of these, so you'll see the detail on these on the next page. So you can see in convention tourism, we expect to have about 417,000 more than we needed to have, about 61,000 extra in capital. We have two new bond funds that are being created for our public works facility. One of them is using the water money, the other one is the non-water. And so you can see those $10 million expect, 10, sorry, the $10 million and $7.5 million would be used up once we have the public works facility. So that money's already spoken for, so we're having zero balance, and that's okay because that's expected. Our stormwater infrastructure fund, if we do all the stormwater projects that we have planned for the bond, and they all cost the amount that they should cost, we'll have to be using some of our money from our stormwater infrastructure to offset the stormwater bond fund. If we do that, we expect to end up with about $338,000. Ideally, we would like to have about $800,000, that's about half a year's worth of revenues. So we would not have the full amount that we would like to have, so we're about $469,000 under where we would like to be with it. We think it's manageable, we think probably these projects are not going to all be done anyway, and we'll really have a little bit more revenue this coming next year before we actually spend all the money on the projects. And even if we did spend it all, we'd still have about $338,000 left. So it's not where we'd like to be in a great comfortable cushion on top of a cushion position to make sure we're set for any eventuality, but it's still some money left over, and I think we're in an okay spot with that. Our motorfield, yes?
I just digress for one second.
Sure.
Just because of, anybody who wants to see how these stormwater projects are working, go to Warwick Street today. You can drive down Warwick Street, that's the first time since I've lived on the, over there, that that road has stayed open with this kind of-
It's a good point. You know, usually, you know, you'll be making an opposite argument that every storm's different and you can't tell, but we've had all our reoccurring things happen across all town, plus ones that don't happen as often, and Warwick was the only one that, you know, performed normally. So it was, it was a, a good investment and it was demonstrated yesterday.
But as we go forward with these others, the others are going to accomplish some of the same thing. It just, it takes a little bit of time, but, you know, kudos to your folks, they did a great job because I'd never remember a ward being open with four and a half to five inches of rain, ever.
Well, a tribute to the stormwater management program recently developed.
So overall, our capital projects fund ends up with about 72,000 more than our minimum balance. Our specific purpose funds, we'll go into those in a little bit more detail in a minute, ends up with about 2.6 million extra. Those include can, are things like our vehicle replacement program, downtown parking, IMRF, our DEA partnership fund, and our TIF fund. Our TIF funds, you'll note, we have historically set our recommended minimum balance is whatever balance it has because it really needs to start building up its cash balance. And these balances listed here for the TIF are the cash balances. They do not include money that is actually owed to the general fund or to other village funds, because as you'll recall, there's a lot of things that have been done in the TIF where the TIF didn't have the money, the village loaned the TIF money. And so really, instead of having a million dollars, the TIF owes the village several million dollars. But it has, it's expected to have close to about a million dollar, 1.8 million dollars in cash at the end of the year, and so we're planning not to spend that beyond that. We don't feel like there's any excess there. It's still getting close to being able to pay off what it owes. Similar with the CBD, Community Central Business District TIF as well. And you can see the debt service fund is also a little bit less than what we would typically want to have in there. Ideally, the way that it would work is you would do bonds such that you'd figure out when you're going to do your bonds, you'd have, transfer all the money the first year into the debt service fund so that it could pay it off the next year. Last year, then probably also this year, we're going to have a, our first payment on the bond that comes in the same fiscal year we start putting money into the bond fund. Again, it's still okay because before we pay off the debt next year, we'll have received enough money to make the payment, but in an ideal, perfect world, each year, the debt fund would start off here with enough money to make the debt instead of having to get any transfers into it.
Spencer, are you able to build that then? Or, you know, you're saying a little bit like we're, it's not a preferred way of doing it, and so we're behind, and you're going to be able to manage that, which is fine. But there's, is there a way to build it up so you're not in that same position going forward?
So what we could do is we could transfer some more money from our excess reserves. If we didn't want to save that million out there, we could- if we didn't want to save that million out there, we could transfer and put it in the debt fund. But from my perspective, I would rather have that money in the excess reserves, because that can be used for anything. Once you transfer it into debt, it's kind of stuck into debt. So we could transfer extra money to bring it up to the balance that would be ideal and perfect. Otherwise, the only way to do it is to make sure that we're spending less than we're taking in, so we could cut costs.
Sitting in a different pocket. Yeah. So it's not a different problem.
It's there if you want it.
Right.
But the situation is more of the TIF's being new, so we're investing early, and then it's recaptured later. So as the TIF gets older, that, that will cure itself.
Right.
Yeah, and get a balance, yeah.
When the TIF money's recaptured, is it done like yearly, or is it quarterly, or how is that collected back in?
So it'll be collected back in a way that the village determines works best for the village and the TIF.
Okay.
So we could wait until the TIF is doing well, until it's got a lot of money coming in, you know, 10 or 15 years from now, and then we might say, wow, the TIF has got, you know, $20 million worth of cash, it owes the village, you know, $7 million, it can afford to pay the village the $7 million back. Or we could say, well, let's start paying a little bit each year. So it's really what the village board who...
Budget by budget.
Yeah, budget by budget, how we do it, what the board decides is best for the village and the TIF together. And if it doesn't pay it, then it's, if it ends without having gotten enough money to pay it back, then it just won't ever be paid back.
Okay.
But we expect it to be paid back at some point. All right, so if there's any other questions on the big overall picture, if not, we'll dive into some of the specifics. All right, so the first thing we're going to talk about is again, what was not included in the budget, so what was requested but not covered through. So as, as I mentioned earlier, there were, the departments were very careful in what they put it forward and the things that were considered in the budget, so this list is pretty short, because everyone did a very good job of saying, not just, hey, let's throw in laundry list of everything we could possibly have and see if anything sticks, they said, what does it mean, what's important, and what do we need to make sure we put in there. So one of the requests was the downtown development grant. It started with a base amount or current amount of 15,000. There was a request to say, what if we doubled that to go up to 30,000, so increased by 15,000. Convention tourism fund didn't have quite enough money to cover that, so instead, we're only increasing it by 10,000, so the new budget is 25,000. So in essence, 5,000 of the request was not granted. The next item that's on that list is the Monarch Way Station at 83rd and Ogden, and at this point, we are at least postponing it. There's a little bit more information that needs to be gathered on it. I think, so as you'll recall, we did some design on it to get the final costs, which is how we were able to determine that it would cost $550,000. And one of the issues that we've run into is, as you set up this Monarch Way Station at this island on the highway, IDOT doesn't have a way to know that this is different than other islands, and so if they have to do work and staging work right now, their plan is just to do all their staging work in this island and destroy the Monarch habitat that we would have paid $550,000 for. So, we're looking into that to kind of see what other options there are, because that's probably not the best solution, that's kind of the conclusion we came to at this point.
It's a combination of, well, first of all, it's, there are big treks of property that are not otherwise used. There's a little bit of stormwater management in them, but it's the, it's the pieces inside the ramps and the main highway, the large territory, and then, you know, cooperatively, this is part of our Richmond Garden Initiative and, and our gateway initiative, and all coming together, and kind of like with Claredon Hills, identifying areas where something like this could be developed. You wouldn't take Ty Warner Park into it, because, you know, it's, it's used for other purposes. So from that perspective, it's a good use, but from the authority, the Illinois Department of Transportation is like, they only have their right of way, and Spencer's right, when they do construction, all the contractors, all the staging goes on in these ramp areas. You can see it at Ogden and 294 now, and things like, so it's very common. So they'll give us a permit to do it, they'll promise not to mow it, but they can't safeguard against their own uses, just the same way we would if we were issuing someone else a permit in our right of way. So it's, it's too big of an investment to dedicate to that, for a temporary...
Yeah, so at this point, we know we're not doing it this year, and so the budget is balanced at the way it is without this cost in it, because of some of these extenuating circumstances and more things we need to look into for it. So that's not planning to happen this year. The next item on the list there is administration legislation. There was an increase of, so as we get into other considerations, there's a lot of things that we've kind of grouped into, and operations, things that are under 20,000, kind of a lump sum, and then in capital, things under 100,000. I think at past budget workshop, it was discussed that there's a lot of detail, a lot of things in here that's important for staff to know, but really, at the high-level discussions we're having here, keep it to a limit. So this specific $20,000 was a specific increase in, I think, legal services in terms of, we may need to increase it. As we looked at it, we think we can get by with just increasing it by 10,000, so that's the planned increase instead of the initial hope for 20,000. We think 10,000 will work okay. The plotter for community development department, we were able to find another solution for that, so we don't need to spend that $6,000. And the potential telecommunications increase, we were able to find a way to reduce that bill, so we don't need to spend that 15,000. There was a request for a civil engineer in the public works department. It was a good request, a valid request, there's lots of good reasons to do it. Unfortunately, there, there were not budget funds available for it, and so that is one that has been indicated, we can't start that this year. And then you'll notice in both concrete...
And that one's not a one-time cost either, that, that would be perpetual.
Right, 90,000 every, right. So when we look at things to cut, instead of that, we'd have to look at ongoing things, not just the one-time cost of 90,000.
So we just outsource then, civil engineering when we need it?
I'd cut Norial before I would...
Yeah, so...
The truth comes out.
We'll get him, Norial.
In engineering, we do a lot of outsourced engineering in terms of designing a lot of the projects. Norial does a lot of the management of the projects. In community development, we've had an engineer on staff, at this point, we're outsourcing more of that, as we don't have a current engineer on staff, so, and it would be good to get another engineer in public works, might be able to help pick up some of the stuff that we do outsource, but also would be able to help take care of a lot of management of projects, and it would be a good thing, it just, not in the budget, don't have the money for it.
Do we have an idea how much we're outsourcing? I mean, is it, are we outsourcing like a fraction of what this cost would be, or is it that little of work, is it not a full-time position?
I think that they would probably, I'm su, I'm sure they would be kept busy, I'm, if we did have it, especially if they helped out.
What I'm giving at is, we're not paying a firm 180,000 to outsource it, is what my question is, yes.
No, so there, there's two categories of engineering services. One is in the community development department, that would be, call it processing development projects or permit work. That does get outsourced now, when that engineer left, and, but those costs are passed through, so we're not paying, those are absorbed by the permit applicant anyway. So this is an additional resource, it's more of a, you know, assistance with what Norial's doing in public work, so it's our own community development projects, of which there's also engineers for that that we're doing as well. But, you know, he's managing all that, he's been in everybody's backyard for the last three days, you know, doing those types of things too. So there's a, there's a lot of daily reactive stuff that you can't count on, and that's what this would help with.
Got it.
And then the concrete sidewalk cutting program and the road salt were also examples of where you can see how much it was the requested increase, and then what's actually being approved. In each case, it was about half of the requested increase was granted. So those are the things that are not improved, not approved in full in the budget.
Is the cutting, the grinding, is that what that means?
Yes.
The smoothing them out, yeah?
Yeah.
I thought there was a great service last year, we did it.
Yeah, and so we, we had the 20,000 in there for last year, we still have that 20,000. There was the hope to say, hey, what if we could spend $30,000 this year for it, and instead, we're saying, we'll be spending 25,000.
Is that enough? I mean, do we, do we think we can get, because it was, just in Oakwood, when they did them, it was pretty impactful, and I mean, I would support doing more if that's, I'm just speaking for myself, but to fix them, right? I mean, I don't know, how bad is it in other parts of the town? Is it, do we need more money there?
You can come on up, I'll just, I'll add, and you're welcome to add too, but, I mean, the, the request was lowered to help balance the budget, but the, the need is valid. So, you know, the total amount was, you know, is warranted and justified, and it's...
Much of the program that we've been able to do has been concentrated in Oakwood, which needs it. There are other locations throughout town. 30,000, $20,000 gets us...
Stand.
If you think about Oakwood as...
Norial, can you step in front of the mic?
Small subdivisions. And the first year, we were only able to go from Ogden Avenue all the way up until Oakwood Court about, and it's hard to judge exactly how much in theory length that we can get, because if there's a, something that needs to be adjusted every two to three squares, we only get so much done. So, the thought process behind it was trying to spread the wealth, continue in Oakwood, and then start in the Farmingdale or the Ashford subdivision, and trying to get a little bit more done throughout town versus...
Has any work been done in Farmingdale or Ashford? Has any work been done over there?
Not, not grinding, no.
Yeah, they did some in Newfield Manor, they did something, some downtown, I know that was cleaned up.
We did the CBD downtown, I think about four years ago, using the same company, Safe Step, and now we're starting to branch out into the residential areas.
This is all contractual, don't we do some ourselves?
We do some ourselves, but we're only able to do so much. We don't do it as nicely as they do, and the equipment we have, there's new regulations about the saw cut, the dust, it all has to be wet, and we don't have that equipment anymore.
I, I agree, trustee Nero is, it's just like our roads when we first started, was 50% under, you know, the standard. This is a very visible hazard. I'd like to see if it's not taken away from another project, but you're saying a lot of this is contractually.
Correct, and the more you give us, the more we get done, the less you give us, the less we get done. And we'll just continue every year with the program, and we hope that we are able to address more and more as we go forth.
I would, I would just hate to spend every dime we have on sidewalks in Oakwood. Not that it gets awkward, but, you know, we gotta look at these other neighborhoods too.
So I will put that on the list of the stuff at the end, when we kind of come to next actions, we can make sure we come back to it and say, you know, once we've talked, so I'll put that on the list, anything else we come through in the course of the discussion, we'll get on that list. So at the very end, we can spend the last little bit of time saying, okay, which of these pieces do we want to add in? It sounds like this is a lot of widespread support. So I've got that on the list, so that'll be good. All right, so the next section, and I guess Norial, you'll probably be asked questions on this capital piece anyway, so you can be prepared for that, I guess. So on this next section, we list, these are the capital projects that we have planned. I think there's probably a few that are just carryovers from last time that had no changes that aren't listed on here, but this will include most of the different projects in our capital or project funds. So it's convention tourism, capital, motor fuel tax, and then our stormwater items. I'll highlight a couple of them, but largely, I'm going to, you know, rely on the fact that you get, you can see all the things on the list, you can see if there's any questions you've got specifically. We'll go through a couple of pieces. So one is, we've got some gateway signs. One thing that was pulled out separately that we could look at is the lighting cost for the signs. So this gateway signs include about four, we have four different gateway signs, and the total cost for lighting the signs is about $30,000. So if we want to have signs that can be lit, that's the cost that's in the budget right now. If we are looking to save money, we could potentially say, we don't want these signs to ever light up, in which case, we could save 30,000. So that's just one piece I will mention. Out there, you can see the other cost of the gateway pieces that we're putting in right now is that other 270,000. And then we have in governance, so kind of on the equipment side of those gateways, and then you'll also see in convention tourism, we have wayfinding signs, still budgeted for about 300,000. I don't think there's specific plans to do things with those at the moment, but we want to make sure we've got that money claimed in the convention tourism fund, so that's one of those carryovers. The other kind of items to highlight, you'll notice in the downtown, we've got the cost for flower watering and special events broken out. In the capital section, the infrastructure section down there, we've got CBD alley D and E listed there. I believe the specific alley we're determining between D and possibly G, and a lot of that will be based on what happens with some of the different developments, but we've got money in there for an alley like that. You can see we've got finalizing the fire department stormwater basin, and then some specific stormwater projects that are listed there. The item that's in there labeled as offset is listed, so all the specific ongoing big projects that we're going to do, we have listed in the column, says stormwater bond. But that total amount that we're planning on spending in the stormwater bond fund is more than the amount of the bond we have left, more by about 4.3 million. And so we, if we spend all of that this year, we would have to really have about 4.3 million of it come from our stormwater infrastructure fund, which is funded by our sales tax. And so you can see, that's why there's the minus and the plus. So any questions on any of the capital projects? You can kind of see the big list there. Yes?
My name's Mary Gabriel, and I live in the Ashford subdivision. A question I have on, on the signs, are any of these signs going to be, with the lighting, be any solar lighting, or is it all electrical lines that have to go to these?
Norial's got a great answer for that.
Right now, the proposed gateway signs are all electrical, none of it is solar. Now, we do have the option to go solar, but the difficulty of going solar is the sonar, solar panels that are associated with it, and so we essentially have big solar panels located somewhere near so it can get the power for the batteries. But right now, what we have are proposed for actual electrical connections.
If we didn't do the lighting now, could you run the electricity and then put it in later? Is that 30,000 including everything?
It's, the 30,000 is to get the sign, like basically, it's the guts of the sign that will allow it to light up. So if you don't spend the 30,000 now, you can't just spend the 30,000 next year instead. Any other capital questions?
Do the stormwater projects on here, or it looks like a couple of them, I can't remember what the grants were that we got from DuPage County. Are these, do these figures affect the grants that we were awarded?
Yes, so the grants that we are awarded are included in here...
Someone named them in some goofy names, I don't know where the, the projects were. It said Westmont, so we're happy.
Yes.
I think they're different names.
The $51,000 grant that we obtained is for the Ashford 61st Street project.
Okay, and then there was another one.
I only am aware that we received one grant.
Was it one? I thought it was two. Whatever it is, is that 347 reflect that $50,000 grant?
So, it, that would be reflected in the revenue section, so that 347, I think, is the, I believe that's the gross cost of it, but there's $50,000 in revenues offsetting it. So if we...
So is that that first chart you showed us way back when? I didn't see grants for public works on that.
Yeah, so that's, so back on the chart that shows, so back on, jump back to the...
Sorry.
No, it's fine. So back on the tab that is that fund summary tab in the capital...
Wouldn't that be on the samples of savings, the five years?
So, that 476,000 that's listed under revenues for capital, that includes that grant, the 50,000 of that.
Got it, thank you.
Yep, so it is included in there. Yeah, and that's a good thing, thank you for bringing that up.
I saw sidewalks here with grants, I just figured I'd ask.
Right. Yeah, you're right, there would have been, could have mentioned the grant on that one as well, because there is that $50,000 worth of the grant there.
With the Cass, Cass Avenue resurfacing and median project, because it's on here, does that mean that we were able to work that out with the median, with emergency vehicles and things?
It has not been worked out and solved yet, we are listing it on here so that we have the money to do it if that is determined to be the best course of action. So I think we're still in discussions with the right way to make it work.
Okay.
All right, so we can move on, if there are other questions, we can kind of catch them later, we'll come back and kind of see if there's any final questions. If there's any others right now, we can go, or we can move on to our specific use funds. So these include the DEA partnership fund, we discussed, our IMRF fund, our TIF funds, and our vehicle replacement program. So the vehicle replacement program, you can see the list there of all the vehicles that are being purchased this year, all of them... All of them are in accordance with the vehicle replacement plan. There is, so you can see there, everything that's scheduled to be posted, you'll see several that are listed as a C slash O or a carryover. So, those are items that, based on the vehicle replacement plan, should have actually been replaced last year, or I think in one case even a year before that. But again, the departments say, all right, it's in the budget, it's in the plan to replace it. Do we need to replace it? No, if it can last another year, let's have it last another year before we end up replacing it. So, those have continued to be carried over, but you can see the vehicles that are up for replacement there as part of the typical vehicle replacement plan. In the DEA fund, you can see, again, this is some things that we're able to do for the police, that the police would not be able to have done if we didn't have this DEA fund. So, you can see, there's a proposal for some license plate reading cameras, remodels, miscellaneous DEA costs. A lot of that is kind of ongoing things, but also includes covering the salary of the officer we have in our DEA partnership plan, as well as some lighting replacement in the police department.
No, Spencer, I understand the need for the public works vehicles, but will they be sitting outside for a year?
Will they be sitting outside for a year?
While the construction's going-
While the construction's going on.
Yeah.
Just wondering if we should wait a year and then bring in a new vehicle?
Yeah, we could certainly look into that and see-
I just, what are you thinking? You know, I, I think that would be, because you know how hard it is to have them outside. You get a brand new vehicle, you sit it outside all year. If you need it, you need it.
The vehicles we have now are in the existing garages at Fifty-Fifth and Wilmette, and the existing ones at Water. So, they're still housed the same way, way that goes into construction, and then that, only then do they relocate over there. So, the amount of garage-kept equipment should be the same.
Okay, so we got room to keep them in?
Yeah, the existing space, yeah, they'll just stay there. I mean, there's some stuff that stays outside anyway, like the chipper trucks and-
Right.
Things like that during their season, yeah.
And then at the bottom of that page, you can see our costs in our TIF funds, and you'll be familiar with a lot of these, the Cass and Burlington reconstruction, the ComEd line, the Nering parking lot, and then property acquisitions for a number of different potential properties. So, you can see these, I think you'll be familiar with a lot of these different pieces from prior, previous discussions. So, any other questions on this specific use funds? All right, so the next page is a little bit more detail about vehicle revenue transfer. So, this is where the vehicle replacement program determines how much it needs based on, you know, we say, how old is the vehicle, how long will the vehicle last, and then we set aside money each year to be able to replace it. And so, the real change is in, is the column that says increased consideration, that's when we have a change to the program, to the change of how long vehicles will last or a significant increase in how much vehicles cost. And you can see, the only change is on utility trucks. So, right now, we have four utility trucks in public works. We're looking to change it to three utility trucks and a small box truck. The small box truck will be replaced sooner, so at nine years instead of the fifteen, but it also costs significantly less. So, the overall change is instead of twenty-five thousand dollars for the four utility trucks each year, we now have to put aside twenty-three thousand for the three utilities and a small box truck. So, you noticed on the prior sheet, there was one of the vehicles to be replaced is a small box truck, which is this change because it'll be a lower cost vehicle that we're replacing. Any questions on that one? Kind of a basic one, it really goes hand in hand with the last sheet. All right, the next one gets into the general operating considerations. So, this is the operating departments. Now, we're kind of off the capital projects or the big main projects, it's more of the day-to-day operations. So, you'll see, this will also list the base amount, the increased consideration, and then what the grand total is. So, I mentioned, there's some offset revenues that are included in this, where revenues goes up and so does expense. One of those, we've mentioned a couple of them were related to fire. Another one of those that you'll see in some of the different departments, it's kind of through every department, is the NICOR. As you'll recall, we used to have NICOR, where NICOR, part of the franchise agreement, gave us some free natural gas, and now they've changed it to where they give us some cash. So, the revenues went up, but so did the expenses. So, we've also talked about the permit parking fees going up, we mentioned that. In the governance section, so again, this is set up based on the sections of the strategic plan, and then within there, within each department. So, you can see in administration legislation, there's a couple of things that individually were under twenty thousand that altogether totaled an increase of about nineteen thousand dollar increases. We have ten thousand set aside for the, a request from the EIC committee was some, for some special recycling events, so we have ten thousand budgeted for that. We have a reduction in costs due to some changes in HR personnel. In the finance department under governance, you can see an increase in credit card processing fees. As you may imagine, more and more people are paying with their credit cards. When they do that, it costs a little bit of money. You'll see the same thing in the water fund there. In IT, you can see there's a lot of individual equipment pieces, but there's also a couple of software programs I wanted to at least mention. One of them is sixteen thousand dollars for a places for eating tax remittance system. This is something that will automate some of what we do in terms of collecting places for eating tax on a regular basis. The sixteen thousand dollars is actually the price that we'll have to spend next year. They're willing to give us the first year free, but before we commit to it and get all our businesses going on one system, that that system will be there the next year too, so we want to make sure we have the money for it. There's more details about it, we'll probably want to talk through it more at a committee discussion about, does it make sense to, you know, do this and push our businesses that direction to more online payments, but we have the money and the budget for that. There's also a six thousand dollar set aside for FOIA management, so this is something that will be able to help the deputy village clerk, as she's going through the FOIA requests, as you're aware, we get a lot of FOIA requests. And a lot of people like to use the words any and all. And so, they say, oh, yeah, give me any and all emails that have this word in it. And so, what that does is if I've sent an email and I've copied five people, and, you know, somebody else copied two people, then you've got like ten different emails, and our current system will pull all of them and make the deputy clerk look through every single one of them. One of the benefits of the new system is this says, boy, this person copied all these five people? That's not six different emails, that's one email. And so, tremendously cuts down the amount of work and staff time that we have to do for it, and for six thousand dollars, it's a great deal.
Which has turned into a full-time job, just processing FOIA requests.
We get that many here, huh?
Yeah. Well, they're, they're free now, you know.
From who? Just individuals, companies?
Attorneys, companies?
Really?
Residents, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I wonder about this. Pop in and see a lucian any day, she'll be-
No, I believe it.
And it's their right, so they, but a lot of them ask, like Spencer said, everything.
Any and all.
Right, so somebody says, boy, I've got a question about this medical facility, hey, how about any and all emails that ever dealt with a medical facility?
Jeez.
And how about any and all emails that ever mentioned this word? Because that's, could have been in a discussion about a medical facility.
It's not even just emails.
Right.
Emails, notes, documents, ordinance, you know, it's-
Right.
Every, everything.
Yeah, so it is all the documents that we have to respond to with FOIA.
I can't imagine.
Yeah, I feel like this one does a lot with, a lot of the benefit from this one is through the email, you know, making that a lot more efficient. So, again, as we talked about, one of the priorities in strategic plan was to try to use technology for efficiencies, and that's a good example of that.
And Spencer, it's seven business days unless we ask for an extension, so she really-
Five.
Five, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Weekend. She works weekends with this, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, so that's a good, good use of the six thousand dollars. You'll also notice we have an increase in GIS, so twenty-five thousand dollars to increase our GIS program, which is also related to the IT personnel request of thirty-one thousand. And GIS is something that, again, is trying to leverage technology to make things easier for staff and also easier to respond to residents, provide information to residents, and to work with our new software system. GIS will be very helpful in those, in those regards. We've already talked about the civil engineer that was requested, but did not come through, and then the offset revenue is a reference to that NICOR there. In identity and image, you can see in the fire department, there is an increase for dispatch, you'll see a similar increase in dispatch for police. So, we've got an idea what the dispatch is going to increase, our annual amount will increase, that annual cost will go up this year, but we won't have to pay the full amount because the annual cost changes close to the end of our fiscal year. So, we won't have to pay that full seventeen thousand, but we've made sure it's covered in the budget and that we have that. There's the fire personnel, which most of those changes have largely been done, it's kind of the changes up to this point that weren't budgeted, but now they're in this budget at this point. We've got the offsetting revenue that we talked about, the special events for the bike medic, that's something that, as you recall, from public safety committee discussions, the Andres, not Andres, I'm sorry, the Kurtz paramedics have covered some of these costs for some of these special events so far this year. We had sort of an agreement that they would continue to do it, they've been bought out by a bigger company, so we weren't quite as sure if they would do it. They've told us they plan to continue doing it, so we probably won't have to pay this twenty thousand, but in case we do, it's there, just in case. As you're also aware, we're still working on going out for another RFP to get those services, which would include these sort of things in the contract.
We only did a one-year renewal this last week.
Yep.
And that, you know, so that is to adjust all this during the next year.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I could ask a real quick question?
Sure.
On that exact set, section in fire, you've got offset revenue, and then you've got revenue offset. Can you explain the difference to me?
Yeah, I probably called it two different things when I was typing them up. So, it's probably my fault, there's probably not a significant difference. I think in, in actuality, what the difference is, so, I didn't intend to have a difference, but really what it is, is the offset revenue is the NICOR piece, so it's the cost for the natural gas for their building. The revenue offset is the thing related to the fire protection district, so especially the north fire protection district.
The SSA.
Right, the SSA. So, now with an SSA, the equipment that they were providing to our fire department, we now have to cover through the SSA. So, that's, maybe it's a good thing I messed up and put them two different ways, because there is a distinction in that.
I designed.
Intentionally. Let's change it to that.
So, you catch it.
In the police section, you'll see there is crossing guards for Andy, Andy Frank crossing guards are listed, there's an increase of seven thousand dollars. There's a request from the school to add one additional crossing guard. This seventy-two hundred would be the full cost, but our general plan is we get reimbursed by the school for twenty-five percent of the crossing guard fees. So, that's, that twenty-five percent is part of that revenues that we saw back on that first page in the general fund. So, there is that portion of revenues, assuming we do this position, our revenues increase by the couple thousand dollars to cover that. And then the offset revenue, again, the NICOR piece is the large increase for that, eight thousand.
Okay, before we turn the page, I just wanted to say, the EIC, the special recycling event here, we're looking at trying to do some recycling events village-wide. It's very complicated and it's very difficult, so I don't know, we're asking for the money, but we don't know that it'll be spent, because the logistics of this kind of stuff is turning into a nightmare. So, while we'd like to provide it with the bulb smashing and battery recycling and all these other things, the pumpkin composting and all that, to do something on a larger scale across the thing, you know, the costs are going up and the logistics of the whole thing. Like, we were talking about hazardous paint collection, and, you know, the only source right now is Naperville through their fire department, through the county. And you can't even, you know, the, the logistics of collecting it here and hauling it there doesn't appear to be an option, and to ask everybody to drive it there, they're just not going to do it, so they're going to keep it in their basement or their garage or whatever happens to be. So, you know, that's the kind of hurdle you're trying to get it over. So, I, you know, again, we'd like to keep it there, but whether it'll be, was we just-
It'd be part of the carryover next year.
Yeah, right.
Right.
That includes styrofoam?
Styrofoam is something that we're, you know, we're working on as well, which is very simple too, right? Except for it's huge.
Well, that has got to go to Western Springs.
Yeah, right, right. But Linda's driving it all.
Yes, I am.
Till we go into another section or turn the page. Anybody got questions at this point?
By the time you get your trucks empty.
Just wanted to-
All right. On the next page, you can see similar things in community development. This is one of those examples, I know we talked briefly about engineering and contractual engineering. You can see, they had contracted thirty thousand for engineering, they're increasing it by thirty thousand, which is more than offset by the reduction in personnel costs, so it's listed there. Under infrastructure, you can see in public works, the pieces we've already discussed. In addition, there is also a thirty thousand dollar increase in streets overtime costs. The overtime account has not been increased in the last couple of years, and to cover the costs for taking care of winter storms and those kind of things, it really needs to be increased, so it's being increased now. Any questions on those operating considerations?
Do you know, on overtime, do you have, how much have we been averaging a year? Do you know?
So, this past year was a little bit higher than this. I think last year was about this amount. So, I think it's pretty close to the sixty thousand is a pretty good estimate. This year, I think it's going to be a little higher.
And it's for every different reason, so.
Right, every different reason. I think the biggest ones that we see in the majority of overtime is usually for snowplowing in the streets, but it could be for other things too. So, I know it's, you know, we take, we do-
Could be for pumping rain.
They've been a lot of overtime.
Pumping rain, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's the more recent one. So, it's a lot of storm event-related things, but other things as well. Any overtime that's needed.
And they go out to, if we have a storm, let's say trees come down and they're in the parkway, you know, they have to go out and do that too, so.
Yep. Yeah.
Sometimes it's, it can be as simple as just clearing the roadway and limiting it on the parkway, and then coming back during regular hours to get rid of it, but, yeah, there is a response that's required.
Yeah, and it seems like we're getting more and more extremes, so it seems like the overtime costs are going to keep going up.
Yeah. It's all, it's also event-related too. The more events we add, the more overtime there's added.
That's true.
Which is a good thing, it's a good problem.
Yep. Yep. The next page is just kind of an overview of each of the different departments, the operating departments, and you can see what they were in the prior year, and then compared to what the change is. As you know, we typically would talk about village-wide increases separately from the rest of the department, so you can see the changes that they had. I will say, the biggest piece of the finance decrease is just a change in where we account for our developers' payment. Couple of years ago, we had it in debt. Those auditors we had back then didn't like it in debt, said it shouldn't be in the general fund, so we moved it to the general fund and the finance. Now, these auditors agree with where we put it the first time, and said, go put it back to debt, so we've now moved it back to debt. So, finance had a really big increase a couple of years ago, and a really big decrease this year. That's kind of that piece. And then you, as you can see, the increases and decreases are things we've already talked about. So, there's a lot of the IT equipment that we already talked about, is what's driving up their increase. And then the transfers, as you might imagine, is largely related to the debt.
Right.
So, moving on to village-wide personnel increase, as typically talk about this, there's two or three different categories that these village-wide increases cover. So, the first one is the agreed-upon increases, so these are the increases that are either based on, typically when we hire somebody, we'll say, we'll give you a specific amount here, and then over the course of time, once you get through a qualification period, then your salary will have a little bit of an increase. And so, those pieces, as well as anything in the union contract required, so it's pretty much things that we've already agreed to that have to happen, those agreed-upon increases total about a hundred and eleven thousand. And then we also have a general wage adjustment. In this case, the general wage adjustment that fits within the budget and seems pretty consistent with what other communities are doing this year, as well as the amount that's in our union contract with our police is two and a half percent general wage adjustment. It's about three hundred and thirty-six thousand. Many years in this section, you'll also see an increased cost for health insurance, because that, again, in fact, impacts personnel throughout the whole village. that, again, in fact, impacts personnel throughout the whole village. This year, health insurance costs stayed about the same. As you may be familiar with, I believe it's been discussed at a previous committee, or when we talked about different health things at a previous discussion with the village board, our health insurance costs did go up significantly, but as you recall, last year, the amount that we got quoted for health insurance and the amount for health insurance from our NUCO operative was significantly less than it had been. At that time, staff kind of determined that the conservative route would be to say, "Let's not put all our eggs in that basket of assuming costs are going to go down as much as they really would, so let's hold our costs steady last year instead of dropping them." And so it turns out this year that that was a good decision, because about the amount that went down last year, and they said, "Oh, you can save, look at all this you could save," they've gone up by that same amount this year, and so now the costs are about where they were two years ago. So, because we didn't drop the costs last year, this year, we don't have to raise the costs significantly. So that's a good thing, it doesn't end up cutting into our programs. I'm sure next year, as we have incremental costs, you'll see it again on the sheet. It won't be a huge amount, but it will probably be there. All right, so moving on to the general one-time categories, so these are, the last ones we looked at were the operations ongoing changes to things in the general fund. These are individual one-time things, so there's some chairs in the executive session room, there's some other village hall office furniture, there's some equipment in IT that's an increase, some minor increases that are individually under 20,000 in public works that total about 23,000. In fire department, there's some money for bulletproof vests, that's something the boards talked about in committee. There's also 75,000 for tree planting and beautification. Pasconelli, as we talked about, the identity and image of the town is an important part, and is one of the priorities we have in this budget. Along those same lines, we also have, in community development, architecture design review, which is hiring some outside services to be able to help. So when we get these great presentations about how nice buildings will look and how great they'll be, they're able to look at those renderings and say, "Okay, that's great, as part of our deal and agreement and what you're going to be submitting the permit, here's the kind of materials that you have to use, that you're telling us you're going to use, and to keep in the right aesthetic qualities," and kind of all the detailed nitty-gritty stuff to make sure that what we're promised of how beautiful things are going to be actually turn out to be that way. So there's a little bit of funds for that, as well as some costs for interim assistance during our ERP. And then you can see in public works, some additional equipment. You'll recall, last year, we added some money for a snowbox, and that's been very useful, and so we're looking at getting another snowbox this year because of how beneficial that's been. So any questions on these one-time considerations? Right. In the debt service fund, you can see in here, we've listed things as expenses and the revenue. Again, the revenues are negative, expenses are positive, and so you can see where the money comes from and where it's spent in our 2013 bond, our 2017 bond, and our 2019 bond for the public works facility, and our annual administrative fees, and then our developers' know that's the item that I mentioned, had been in finance, the price has now been moved. So any questions on debt?
And all our bonds are not tied into taxes. It's all special...
Right. So all of our bonds are alternate revenue sources, so they're not on the property taxes and don't impact people's property taxes.
Thank you.
The water fund includes both, again, operating and capital, and so you can see in operating, our net income is negative 490,000, so that means we're bringing in more revenues for operating than we're spending, and that's a good thing. You can see how we're spending it in capital, and so our grand total is, we're spending more than we brought in this year, but that's okay because of our fund balance that we saw on the prior page. We saw we still net the positive amount. So, then down at the bottom, it shows the considerations in the water fund. As we noticed in the finance and the general fund, credit card processing fees are increasing. We have 20,000 listed for a federal emergency response plan that we're required to do. Again, we have offsetting revenue pieces, largely utility costs there. And then in capital, we have our debt payment, and then we've got some Washington Burlington, North Washington Burlington to Naperville Water Main replacement, a pay station upgrade, some adjustments in terms of which vehicles are being replaced, and then water tower design for the new water tower. So, any questions on the water fund?
Not really a budget question. Des Moines and Warwick, there's a whole bunch of pipes that got dropped off. Are we, are we putting a bigger water line in there?
The gas.
Gas.
Yeah, how big a pipe? I mean, gas mains, that's probably natural gas, because NICOR's been two years...
Steve, we did the salary survey, as far as comparable communities our size. Are we, is all of our employees pretty much where they need to be now, after a couple of years?
Yeah, well, that was, yeah, it's been, it's a couple of years old now, now that it's out of date, but we did the village-wide compensation study, and we did all that, and then brought everybody, not only is it taking the, you know, not by individual, but the job, and ranking those and putting them in their bands or their tiers, and then there's the individual employees, there's ways to score and move within there. So everybody was done at the same time. Anybody that wasn't up to where they were at were all brought up at that time. The people that were over, there was, I'm guessing, I think there was two employees that were actually earning outside where their range was. So their, their annual general wage adjustment was half of what it was for other employees. They still got something, but they're, until they caught up and got within their band, that was their, so everybody's in there. Every once in a while, there might be one job or two, we reevaluated each time there's, you know, a change or a question, and we go through the whole formula and double-check them, and...
Yeah, I think the key, when we looked at that, is to get our employees competitively with the other communities.
And then that whole score and range, all changes by whatever general range adjustment you know, it all moves, you know, at the same time, so...
Everything, even the high and low for a job description is going to move every year based on what we're doing, yeah.
Yeah, so what we've done the last couple of years has been, the high and low for the job will move in accordance with CPI. Last couple of years, the general wage adjustment has been a little bit above CPI, and so what ends up happening is employees' salaries go up such that employees that have been here a longer period of time have a chance to move through the range. So the range goes up a little bit, their salaries go up a little bit more, and so they inch their way through the range. I mean, they'll never hit the top, but to at least make a little bit of movement through there, through the range.
You're talking under a percent though, as far as the CPI, now 2.5%, isn't it? Less than a percent?
Right, I think the last couple of years, CPI's been like 1.8% or something, and the general wage adjustment's 2.5%.
So it's not a huge...
So it's not a huge difference, so they move up a little bit, not large amounts.
Asking about, you know, as we're looking for revenue, the water billing and the billing errors and all that metering stuff, are we caught up and done with all that?
So, we are still looking into that. I will say, the money that we set aside for that, the money that we're paying the consultant to look into that, we're finding a few pieces here and there, so we're kind of still looking at it, the consultant's still looking at it. We are not as far along with having solved all of it as I would like to be, but we're still plugging away and trying to find different pieces. So, we've kind of found, and the consultant said this is what you typically find, is there's a lot of different little pieces. So one thing that we did this year is we, you know, kind of talked to the consultant, you know, he tested and checked a lot of some of the high meters and just kind of went through to double-check them, and when he talked about that, kind of our staff said, "Well, actually, we're more concerned about the meters that are showing low usage, because the big meters that should show high usage based on their size but are actually showing low usage, those would be good ones to test." So for the first time in a long time, we tested those meters, and so we found a few of those that weren't working, so we're getting those fixed. We found a few that are on different factoring, and we're getting those fixed. So we're plugging away, getting closer and closer, but still have some more to go on it.
I do have to say, six years ago, when I first came in on the budget process, they talked, this is what I tell everybody, 45 minutes on a $300 chair. And it, it's true, I sat there and listened to 45 minutes on a chair. And I think what we've done now is address the major items ongoing all year long at our committee.
Actually, we just don't buy chairs anymore.
And we, yeah. It's not a new, and we trust the staff to run the day-to-day, and you've done a great job, so...
I wasn't a part of that 45-minute chair discussion. I added nothing to that. Just clarifying.
That was just one of the items.
It did come from that seat, though.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
Yes, no, come on up. Now's a good time for any question.
I have two questions. One is, the commuter parking lot is kind of not in great shapes right now. In the last couple of years, they've just been doing seal coating, so is some little bit of more repairs in the budget? And then the second question is, in the Ashford subdivision, the streets are more than 30 years old, and they're starting to get a lot more potholes, and again, is that some kind of maintenance or that in this year's budget?
You've got five people jumping up. They're going to hurry up.
Well, at least at Public Works, we're aware of the, some patching that's required over in the commuter station, so we'll be looking at that a little bit closer. Again, it's just a matter of time. Asphalt plants aren't open, but we will continue to monitor accordingly. Now, with our street resurfacing, we do try to do an evaluation compared to our entire community, and evaluate which roadways we do, which roadways we should be adding to our resurfacing based on what has happened over the winter. So we have performed our evaluation, we do, and are targeting certain roadways, but at this time, nothing in the Ashford subdivision. But we will continue to look. If there is maintenance needs, we do have a web QA work order ticket, and our staff will go out there and perform patching, pothole repairs accordingly. Curb repairs will continue to do that.
I will also, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say on that, is, the last time we did this, when we, you know, issued the bonds to fix the roads, you had an outside company do that evaluation, right?
IMS pavement, yes.
Is that a huge cost?
It's around 50,000 a year, every time we do it. Fifty.
50,000 for five-year plan or a six-year plan.
What if you happen to only look at the 50% we didn't do?
Right.
And rate those together.
Well, that, you know, and then the plan is for the streets as they, you know, what we thought last fall, we would be doing in the spring, are changes with the winter too, so the priorities adjust every half a year.
How often would you do that, though, that thorough survey?
Every five to six years. So the last time we did it, if I remember correctly, was 2012 or 2013, and so we're due for a new one. The, the last time we did it was right before we did the, the big resurfacing bond.
So next year's budget, right?
Yeah.
It is currently budgeted, and it current, we do have budget for it now. We're ramping up to do it this spring.
Because that's done based on their criteria, and it's not done on who lives there, or it's all done based on...
It's a mechanical survey.
Mechanical, yes.
Lasers.
Laser study, where it measures the deflection of the base as it drives through the area, and the, the measurement of the deflection helps them give the criteria that whether or not, you know, a rating system which helps us justify which roadways we're going to be adding to the resurfacing.
Tell that to Mary. We don't decide, they do.
We do know, understand, and again, we do have a system that if you do notice something that is, needs attention right away, please let us know at Public Works.
So there's more to the, were you going to talk about commuter station?
Yeah, so I, I did want to mention, in the budget, so on the packet, it's on page 20, but there is 100,000 listed as going towards commuter station improvements. And so part of that is dealing with the NSF Metro, kind of, so it's multiple parties involved, so I don't know that everything will be fixed this year. We've had some money in the budget for this for a number of years, but...
I can add to that, though. So we, Metro's got some planning too, as far as platform repairs. They have a longer-term complete reconstruction of all of the platform areas that we thought was going to be happening this year, but they're not far enough along, that they're going to be out there doing temporary work on the platform, and when we met with them, they want to do the staging in the parking lot, and we specifically picked the worst parts of the parking lot, so that when they have to patch behind themselves anyway, you know, we'll get some repairs done like that. So it's, it's a temporary thing, but, you know, we're in agreement, you know, with the condition. Then, we're piggybacking our own improvements on there, like staircase replacements and other things in and around the depot. So that money that Spencer referred to is so that we can participate on the bigger project when it's ready to go. Also, things like, you know, we haven't have it solved yet, but like heated platforms, so that we don't have to deal with the salt and the salt corrosion that is causing all these problems that are out there now too, and then it will be done in advance of anybody having to be dispatched out to attend to it, and other things on the top side, you know, along the depot building, parking, all of it. So it's all kind of lumped into one big master plan, being done in parts, working with each other as best as possible. It's hard to, when there's other agencies, you're, the coordination gets more difficult.
I have one request for the future. Can we improve the lighting in our neighborhoods at some point? It's pretty dark. I'd rather walk the alleys than my sidewalk along the neighborhood.
That's why we added addresses, because you were walking the alleys.
So the lighting in the, so in a, in a, you, you live in a older part of town, so the, a modern subdivision, where, you know, modern, we have the, the street lighting is based on spacing and photometrics and all of it, and the lighting goes through there, and the whole subdivision is lighted that way. In the old part of town, by old part, everything from 55th Street to Chicago Avenue and up to Ogden, in many cases, the street lighting is not, leave out the downtown. The rest of the 1920s Westmont is, the street lighting is all Commonwealth Edison. So they're on the wood poles, and you'll only see them at the intersections, because that's where the wood poles are at, or they're going down the alley, so it's where the alleys intersect with streets sometimes, and that's how that's all done. So to, it's not that we can't do that, but we would be having to add our own street lighting network to the whole neighborhood to, to accommodate that. It's a whole different level project, it's not just...
No, I know, it's a big project. I'm just wondering if we can start attacking it at some point.
So like our 10-foot-high black poles, pedestrian lighting that we have in the downtown, if you go to like, east of here, anywhere, you know, Western Springs and the Granges, they did the entire neighborhoods with those in the parkways, just all, whatever it is, 50 feet apart, you know, 100 feet apart, and, yeah, probably not 50, but...
That'd be real fast.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, you know, 2,000 a pole times...
The new poles that...
A thousand poles, you know.
Are the new poles that Verizon or whoever's putting in, those new LEDs, are those brighter than the ones we have now?
They're, they're, no, but they're, they're supposed to match the equivalent...
I was hoping for a good answer for Ginny, is when they do south side of Ogden.
Well, they can be brighter, but you don't want, you know, in a sunlit intersection, and then it just makes the rest of the block darker. So, you know, your eyes don't, your eyes don't work like that, you know, you're either dilated or constricted, you can't go back and forth into those.
The next meeting, I'm going to bring you some more dark skies information.
Yeah, see, you want to add them, he wants to pull them out.
I've got a whole committee behind me that wants to pull them out.
But to answer your question, it's the same amount of light, but significantly less power because they're LEDs, so they...
Because they're only direct replacements, they're not putting them in spots, they're not...
But Steve, to follow up on, on that question, we've been talking here over a period of time, a couple of different spots where we've talked about putting in parking lots. Lincoln Street was one of them. Would we light those parking lots?
We should.
Would that, would that give an opportunity to do, to put a, a street pole out there at that?
Yeah, or in a situation like that, we would use our own lighting standard and have a little mini network, you know, of lights, but it'll probably be lower-level lighting because of the parking lot, and, I mean, keeping with both energy efficiency and you don't need parking lots lighted, you know, at 2:00 in the morning. So at some point, you would want those timed off anyway.
Well, I don't think you walk at 3:00 in the morning, do you?
No.
But, I, I mean, it's something we, we sure, in a couple of these areas, there might be a way of putting in a light, which would make it more safe.
Yeah, I mean, certainly block by block and location by location, or where they're at, when the request comes in, we'll go look at it. We can get Commonwealth Edison, but I'll tell you right now, you put in a request, and it's about a year and a half later that it shows up. But they'll add a pole somewhere, and then span a wire to it, but, you know, now you've got a wooden pole in your front yard.
But even if we could do something mid-black, because there's only lights at the corners.
Right.
And, because we're in the same neighborhood, and...
If you cut down all the trees, you only need...
No, no.
You know, what you really need is a, a lighting study, is where are the light poles and how much light are they giving out?
Get rid of some of it.
GIS for the whole time.
I, I mean, and we've got some areas that I definitely know are pretty dark at night, especially the longer streets go south of, of Washington, or Miller School, that's a very long block, and of course, there's nothing in the middle for lighting, so, these are all things we can talk about down the road. But it's just that if we're doing something with a parking lot with lighting, maybe we can come up with a little something to shed some light.
It's a good public... It's a good Public Works committee discussion.
Yeah.
But it's not in the budget currently.
I know that. I'm just, I said in the future, did I not say in the future?
You did, so we can start thinking about it this fiscal year so we can try it for the budget next year, right?
I'm not even hurrying you that much.
One of the extra poles.
It's a good question.
That is a problem.
It's not just your street, Ginny, it's several of the streets.
I know, I know.
It's a good question. If we're doing something, you know, even at the other end, behind China Chef, where we've talked about that lot, if we're doing something and if there's going to be some lighting, is there some way of doing just a little step? And I don't know if there is or not, but at least we can discuss it. It's good to think about it.
Ladies, anything you want to ask?
Everybody could see.
No? It's a good time to do it.
All right, so we're, go ahead. No? I was going to say, so we're getting close to the end, so I think we can come back and cover sidewalk cutting, or if there's any other pieces we want to adjust or change to the budget. After we're done tonight, the next step is on May 9th, the board will be considering the budget in their budget meeting and presumably adopting a budget. Then after that, there's still a few more pieces that will need to be discussed or decided. So we'll be discussing, we'll have to approve an ordinance for parking fees, approve an ordinance for water fees, assuming that we don't make any change to the budget for that. Discuss the places for eating remittance, we'll be at a committee meeting. If we needed to talk more about gateway lighting, we could. I think we've kind of discussed that already, probably don't need to bring that up again. So I think, and then in July, we'll have our appropriations ordinance. So I feel like the last piece at this point is just to kind of make a determination about sidewalk cutting. And looking at the general fund, I think we probably have the funds to cover it. So as you'll recall, we dropped $5,000 out of that request at that point to kind of get the budget balanced. Since that initial balancing, there's been a couple of tweaks here and there in terms of revenue and those kind of things. Right now, we have a net surplus of $19,000, so if we wanted to add that $5,000 back in for sidewalk cutting, I think we could do it.
Double it.
If the board is interested in that.
Double it. I mean, I don't know how much, how bad it is.
Yeah, sir, need a survey.
How bad it is. Well, that's a very visible benefit.
Public Works to go through the neighborhoods and.
It's a trip hazard.
Tell us what they need, right? I mean, we're pulling a number.
I got one question.
I thought you were being funny.
With debt service, what was our budget last year?
With debt service?
Yeah.
Pull that up, see.
I think it was $20,000.
Yeah. Twenty was the annual budget, right?
It was a lot.
For sidewalk was 20.
Yeah, I'll pull it up. Let me check.
Because I think what I'm looking at here is.
So it would, it'd be basically the same amount without the 2019.
About 87 million.
Yeah, sorry, which one are you?
With debt retirement, right?
That includes everything.
I thought I had a hard time doing the $8 million park budget. Geez.
Grand total expense is about 87 million, yes. Yep.
So, so, you know, again, with, with the projects that we're doing with the money that we're, you know, for a town of 26,000 people, we're almost at $3 and something, you know, it gets, it gets to be expensive per resident, but, you know, we're doing it and we're doing it with, without any real general tax revenue raising. So it's the water revenue, which, some of which we can't control, and then the user taxes, which we can, that we've identified for specific purposes. I really think we, we've done a heck of a job with this thing, you know? Be nice to say it was less, but I don't think it can be.
So the debt service for last year would have been 1.9 million last year, so now it's moving up to a little bit more in terms of costs. It's not a huge increase in terms of costs this year because most of what we're putting into debt is going to start being paid out the following fiscal year. So I think it was about $500,000 less last year.
Are we still talking about the sidewalk grinding?
So wait, we got 1.9 million in sidewalks. If there's 20 and we got 19, could we double it and just go 40? Is there, and get it done?
Let me give you a little bit perspective, maybe kind of give you a gauge what we can actually do. So we've been targeting Oakwood, the Oakwood Drive itself, the main thoroughfare through that subdivision.
Who lives in Oakwood?
So now that we've.
Same girl.
And he hasn't been there that long.
So it's taken three programs.
My sidewalk's still uneven, but that's all right.
It's taken three programs for us to finish just Oakwood Drive. So we're requesting the initial, just to carry forth was the 20,000, and that would probably only get half of the very first subdivision, which is comprised of Baltimore, Independence, and Champlain. It won't finish the entire sub, that little sub subdivision.
Unit one.
However, we've been concentrating a significant amount of money at the Oakwood. The thought process was continue what we can in Oakwood and now start spreading the wealth at another location, which we were targeting either the Farmingdale Cove or even Ashford subdivision. But there, again, we have a significant amount of miles of roadway, of sidewalks that need attention. If we can't get to where we do the sidewalk grinding, it just gets added to our concrete removal and replace, or trying to get some of it done where we can with our in-house equipment. This is just targeting areas that the more you give, the more I can get done.
What's the threshold that they did? Is it two inches or more they fix?
It's usually about an inch and a half.
Can't we bump that up so we can knock out more severe ones and cover some of the bigger problems?
It gets to a point where because of ADA and the way that they have to shave it, if there's anything more than two inches, you're getting a significant amount of concrete that is shaved. It doesn't become cost-effective anymore. It's cheaper than to remove.
What's the Irma trip hazard, inch and a half or an inch?
Anything over half an inch.
Half an inch is, you know, considered worthy of attention.
So when you see an inch and a half trip hazard, they're shaving almost, I want to say it's, I think, 14 inches of that sidewalk, almost 16 inches of that sidewalk, and that, that's where it starts getting costly and pushing the threshold where we should have just removed and replaced.
Noriel, not only costly, but how, how weak does those sidewalks become when you start shaving that much off?
Uh, well, again, it's, our sidewalks are five inches thick, and when they do shave off an inch, you're leaving four inch, but it does buy us a little bit of time.
I would just ask you to assess those other neighborhoods and pick off the worst.
Yeah.
Do we get a lot of.
Like we did with the roads, right?
A web Q and A that comes in for the sidewalks?
Yes.
Good, that's a good thing. So people are being, they're observant and they're getting in touch with us to say, hey, this is a trip hazard, so I, that's great that people are using that.
We are starting to see a lot of walkers where they, they notice something in front of their house, they'll complain to us, let us know, and then I inform them about web QA.
They're walking to Henshaw County.
And then the very next day, they'll give me 50 locations where they walked that night.
Okay, it's good, it's good. I'm glad to see that people are using that to help bring it to our attention. I mean, when we're out walking, too, I'm sure you have the same thing. I will watch and sometimes I'll go, ooh, got to let you know about that one.
So certainly add back in, at least that 5,000.
At least, yeah.
Or, if, instead of the 30,000 you were looking for, if you got 35,000, would that be okay? Could you use it?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you use it?
Staff will always take whatever money you're willing to give.
Yes. Spencer, would you just, we've got a couple of guests in the audience that I don't recognize, but I, I think it's always important to say that when we're looking for revenue, that you can never say it enough that we only have limited places to get it, you know, the water billing and that. If you could just explain that one more time, so it goes with this recording?
Sure. So the village is a non-home rule community as such. We operate under the state statute. Basically, whatever the state says we can do, that's all that we can do, and they have a lot of limits on the things that we can do. Non-home rule communities have the ability to do anything the state hasn't said they cannot do, and so they have a lot more flexibility and a lot of different revenue sources. So for a non-home rule community, there's not a lot of revenue sources we can look to. So our hotel motel taxes are specifically already geared and can only be used for things for convention tourism. We cannot increase our sales tax except for with a referendum. As you know, we did that with our stormwater sales tax referendum, but beginning this fiscal year, increases to sales tax through referendum, even for, for a non-home rule community, even referendum increases to sales tax can only be used for specific infrastructure kind of purposes. So we're limited in that regard. A lot of communities have a gasoline tax or a local use gas tax, motor fuel tax. The village had one when we were home rule for a little while. Now that we're not home rule, we don't have that opportunity anymore. One of the few taxes that we have that we can adjust at the local level is our places for eating tax. The state gives us the right to regulate and tax places for eating.
We do.
And so that's one of the few taxes that we can adopt and that we have, but there's not a lot of other sources to go to for things. Other communities also have the ability to, in property taxes, ask for a higher amount than the, what's called the property tax extension limitation law, which limits amounts non-home rule communities can get to just an inflationary increase. As we talked about, we talked about property taxes, that increase goes to the police pension because that's the way the pension calculation works, is it goes up X percent each year. And so the inflationary increase we get on all our property taxes, almost all that goes to police. In the last couple of years, it's been, they needed all that inflationary increase plus a little bit more. So there's not a lot of sources that we have the ability to use for additional taxes besides, you know, increasing our rates and costs for things, or water rates, our permit fees, those kind of things, but there's not a lot of options.
Or we went to referendum for stormwater, but that's a sales tax, it doesn't hit the property.
Right, yep, that hits sales tax and can only be used for infrastructure, which was good, and we needed it for infrastructure, it was a perfect fit.
Thank you.
One last question.
Sure.
And I think I ask this one every year because I think it's important. Your total budget, just as a percentage, how much, after you take care of salaries and benefits and the pensions and the things that have to be done, how much is really there for you to work with, to recommend to us for some of the capital improvements and the other things?
So a lot of it is just kind of what's left from those additional savings each year, and it's all based on kind of what we spent in the prior year.
What's the total amount of the one-time list? I mean, that's part of the answer.
That's part of the answer, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not all. That's maintaining the reserves and, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, I would say it's several million excluding the bonds, so not kind of including those because those are the other pieces.
Isn't it normally 70 percent or more of your funds is used for personnel?
Yeah, certainly of our ongoing operations. Yeah, for sure.
And, and the vehicle replacements, which have to be there and.
Right.
You know, I mean, there, there's not a whole bunch in, in all the years that I've sat here that we've ever had to really play with if you really want to.
No, they're, I mean, looking.
Put the numbers together. I think we've done a heck of a job with keeping things going the way they're going, even with that limitation and.
We went down to a very, very, by we, you know, those before us, when the 08 and the, you know, the biggest part of the recession, where we hit a very low point and got very thin and lean and were doing almost as much as we were before, you know, with less. So, you know, we got down to that point and then never really grew too far out of that, and we're, we're growing slower than the economy is growing, which is good, and Spencer's very conservative about all of that forecasting, and we've, we've stayed underneath that all along.
So it's about $6 million in terms of our uses that aren't already committed that we use for all these different capital projects that are one-times.
I said it's, it's not a major amount of money, and it goes fast.
Yes, yep.
The, I do have to say, when I first, I was an outsider looking in for all those years I was involved in the community, and the general impression was the village is sitting on money. We all thought, so I always came out my hand out from the park district, and it's not the case. I mean, when they, it might have been prior to 2000, and it wasn't, they're sitting on money, they had money, but we've consolidated a lot of positions.
Just healthier.
Healthier now, we make sure we got the reserve, but there's not this excess money that is being thrown around. So as I got involved, I realized how dedicated the staff is for watching their expenses, and the fire department's got more, no, who's got more money they spend? Police or fire? He does, yeah, I know, police. And who's got the bigger police?
Personnel, though.
The pension, who, oh, he does, all right. So I do.
He also had the biggest amount in the savings column, if you remember that.
Who's got the big red trucks?
Yeah. Yeah, who drives the million-dollar trucks? But, the fire department. But I do have to say that as I got involved on the internal, I have to say that this, this staff has done a tremendous job, and the board has allowed them to do, to do their job to where they only need to come to us for the major items, the framework, and they, they do everything inside that framework, and they're doing a great job, so.
Yes, I think we all should thank all of them for their hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Including the manager, that's.
I get too much credit all night.
And of course, this guy who's on top of it all.
Spencer and his staff and now all the departments. Spencer, what amazes me is that you're in finance and you know everything about every department, all the way from the paper products they use to the capital money they spend.
So, you know, not to start over, but he's been throwing too much credit at me like all night, and he will, you know, with Ruth, but Spencer, the department heads do work on all their stuff, and in about three months from now, they'll be starting to work on the next budget. And they know their area very well, and they present it and they put it all together and they put in their requests, and before I see any of it, Spencer's learning all that. So he knows all their budgets, requests, as well as they do nearly as well. You heard him explain just about everything tonight, does all that, puts it all together before I ever see it the first time. And I, I do have meetings with the departments, but that's, you know, teaching me what's in there, and he does most of the talking and, you know, explains it to me, and I think that's so that, you know, he knows that he's got it, too. And, you know, I'm pretty late in the process when I'm doing that, so there, it's a lot of effort by Spencer and his staff.
And the department, yeah. Staff do a great job.
You know, for all the people on the board, including myself, because this is, this is a story that's even before me, which seems impossible. But anyhow, I can remember sitting at a village board meeting back in the early 70s, and they were literally going through the box of bills and deciding which ones that they should be paying based on whatever money they had available at that particular time.
Jeez.
Thank God that we're in a position now where we, we have that covered.
We've come a long way.
Now the box is in the computer.
Yeah, but I think we.
Pick off a spreadsheet.
Only Glenn can get to it.
Day-to-day operations covered, folks. We're not sitting there, you know, it was a different, and again, that was a different time, that was before a lot of the sales tax revenue and some of the bigger stores, like Jewel was here, it wasn't at Ogden, it wasn't at Ogden Avenue, so there were a lot of changes in, but it's, those are all positive changes that have made us what we are, so.
Spencer mentioned, I mean, he was talking about the different revenue sources and everything, and he qualified it with being a non-home rule community. So that being home rule, open, as you're already aware, you know, has other opportunities there, so we're, we're very eager for the 2020 census, and we're going to do a good job with the complete count, you know, in Westmont.
How are they doing on, I know they were advertising for workers.
Yeah, I don't know how that's going, but they're, they are, they are hiring the US Census.
Mayor, I'd like to just compliment Spencer, but I'd also say, you know, because Trusty Berry isn't here maybe before our meeting, that Spencer could reach out to him and make sure he's as comfortable as we are with what was presented, because he didn't have the advantage of being here. And, I mean, you put it in English so we understand it, and that it would be just better if he was on the same page.
Good point. Good point. Any other, please, I, I pick 6:45. I need to keep this meeting going for five more minutes. So someone, if I, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Trusty Nero.
Yes.
Trusty Little.
Yes.
Trusty Guzzo.